I think I like it over here. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the to order the June 25th, 2025 public hearing, followed by a regular governing board meeting with executive session. Please let the record reflect that it is now 6:00 PM. And governing board members present, I have Ms. Prosa Cantu.
Present.
Ms. Cassandra Hernandez.
Hello, everyone, present.
Ms. Jennifer Romero.
Hello, I'm present.
And Ms. Denise Garcia.
Good evening, everyone here.
And my name is Lydia Hernandez, the governing board president. Before moving on, I think at the last meeting, we went into a similar public hearing. I just wanted to let everyone know that that public hearing will be will involve the presentation, followed by a question and answer if anybody has any questions from the public. Then we will be closing that public hearing, then going on to the regular governing board meeting. Just the same as we did last time. And I also have an announcement that for everyone's safety, we respectfully ask that no one approached the dais during the meeting, during a recess, or after the meeting adjourns. This includes walking past the podium. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you. I also want to acknowledge that Mr. Watson is joining us for this evening's meeting, and he is on via telephone. Mr. Watson, are you there?
I am. Thank you. It's good to be here.
Okay. Thank you so much. And if you please would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Cartwright School District is located on the ancestral homelands of the Hohokam, Akimil, Odom, and Odom-Jude people, ancestors of the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, or SRPMIC. We acknowledge the rich oral history, culture of these communities, and their ancestral ties to the land. And with that moving forward, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
I second, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Cantu. And how do you vote before I move and take the roll call vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Cantu votes aye. So we are voting on the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Cassandra Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Jennifer Romero, the consent agenda, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Denise Garcia, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And I vote aye, and motion carries. Going on to the the public hearing that I spoke about, this is the we're going to be discussing the proposed 2526 annual expenditure budget and 2520 2025-2026 desegregation budget. Dr. Etheridge.
Good evening, Madam President, governing board members, executive team, and all those in the audience. So at our last meeting, the governing board approved the proposed budget to release to the public so they could take a look, and now we're going to go in depth to talk a little bit more about our our budget for the 2526 school year. To start, I want to remind us all about how governments how government accounting works when it comes to funds. So the fund is a sum of money for a specific objective. So there are several funds that we have here in Cartwright, almost 100 different funds. And each of these funds, you can consider them different buckets of money, okay? And there are different uses for each of those funds. So some of the major ones that we have, maintenance and operations fund, that's used for salaries, benefits, utilities, consumable supplies, those are our day-to-day operations. District additional assistance, oftentimes we refer to this as capital. Those are used for more of our longer-term purchases, building, land improvements, furniture, equipment, vehicles, those types of things. Classroom site fund is a specific fund used for compensation increases. There's also a performance pay component involved in that. We also have, as you know, bond funds, and those are for larger construction-type projects. And then finally, we have adjacent ways funds, which is used for ingress and egress. So when we look at kind of entryways or exitways to just make it easier for drop-off and pickup, as well as for emergency responders to get to our campuses faster. Each of those funds is either what we call budget-controlled or cash-controlled. Budget-controlled funds are determined by some sort of formula, either by the state legislature, by the federal government. There's some formula that tells us what our allocation is, what our budget is, and we can spend up to that allocation. Of course, we need the cash to back that, but really, the amount we can spend is determined by the budget. Whereas cash-controlled funds, those are, we can only spend the amount of cash that we have in the bank. So things like gifts and donations, we don't have an allocation for that because we don't know how many gifts and donations we're going to get, and so we can only spend the cash that's in the bank. Whereas budget-controlled funds like M&amp;O, capital, those types of things are determined based on the allocation from the legislature. So let's take a look at our maintenance and operations fund. So you can see, as we know, student enrollment drives our funding. And more particular, average daily membership. So it's it's very similar. We often correlate those and say student enrollment versus average daily membership because it's just easier, but there is a slight difference. Student enrollment is taking a specific day, that's how many students we have enrolled in our school. Where average daily membership is a calculation based on the first 100 days of school, how many days of that first 100 days was a student enrolled divided by that 100? So if they were here on the first day of school, through the continuously enrolled through the 100th day of school, they were there 100 days divided by 100, they're 1 ADM. But if they don't show up until the 50th day of school, they've only been enrolled from the 50th day to the 100th day, divide that by 100, and they're only going to be .5, so they're only funded at a .5 ADM. The reason that our average daily membership, our ADM, will never match student enrollment is because kindergarten is only funded at .5. That's why when we talk to the legislature and we say, hey, can you please fund full-day kindergarten? That's what we're talking about, is even if a kindergarten student is enrolled on the first day through the 100th day, they're really only funded at a .5. So our average daily membership is always going to be a little bit lower than our student enrollment. But as you can see in FY25, our average daily membership was about 12,266. In FY26, that decreased by 370. So where is is what our estimation is, is that we're going to decrease by about 370 based on historical data, based on demographic studies we've done. That's what we're anticipating our drop will be. Now, when we take a look, the the state will use what's called a weighted ADM. So there's multipliers based on whether you're a pre-K student, a K-8 student, or a high school student. And so there's multipliers to multiply to get what's called our weighted ADM. And that's kind of what they're going to use to calculate some of our our budget capacity. There's also a Group B ADM, and what this is, is the state legislature understands that there are certain subgroups of students that have additional needs and will cost some more money. For example, special education, ELL, gifted, free and reduced-price lunch, all of those are calculated in that Group B ADM. And so that gives us a little bit additional average daily membership to use to calculate it. So our total weighted ADM for FY26, we're anticipating to be about 16,900. Whereas last year, it was 17,400. So again, we're going down about 525 ADM. The base support level in FY25 was $5,013. So the state legislature said, we're going to fund each ADM $5,013. Because a budget has not been passed yet, we are just going to keep that the same at this point. We do expect, and I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation, there, and if only we had a state legislator on our on our dais here. So we have, the the House has certain bills that they're passing, the Senate's passing certain bills, and they're they're pretty different. One thing that we do see common between the two is a 2% increase to that base support level. So we do anticipate that that will come, but at this point, when we're creating our budget, because that's not decided yet, we're just going to keep that the same. Then there's what's called a teacher experience index. So again, the state recognizes that if you have teachers, you have veteran teachers that have been here for longer for a longer period of time, they're going to be higher on the salary schedule, and they're going to cost your district more money. And so in order to mitigate that, they give a multiplier for that teacher experience index. And so if your district has the average average experience level to be above, at or above the state, you're going to get a little bit higher multiplier. So we are at a 1.0253. If your average experience is below the state, it's just just going to be 1. So what this is telling us here in Cartwright is that we retain our teachers, and we have a higher average experience index than the state average. Okay, so we take the total weighted ADM, we multiply that by the base support level, multiply that by the teacher experience index, and we're looking at for next year estimated close to $87 million. But you can see that's a decrease of about $2.1 million over last year. The state does fund because it's required to have audits every year. The state does kind of reimburse us for that audit cost. And then finally, they also add transportation revenue control limit. So they add a little bit money to the base for buses, transportation, those types of things. Again, this is one of those similar things where we kept it the same as last year, but we do anticipate this to also increase by 2%, the state legislature to fund, an increase of 2%. But keeping it the same because the the budget, the state budget has not been passed, we're looking at a total revenue control limit of about $88.4 million in our M&amp;O fund. Again, we can see that's a decrease of about 2.1, almost 2.2 million dollars over what we had for FY25. So now let's add in some of the other funds that go into that M&amp;O fund. So the revenue control limit, we said $88.4 million. We also have the voters authorize the override, and so this it was a tax on the local the local voters. Stepping back a little bit, when we look at that total revenue control limit, that is funded in part by the local taxpayers, and that is funded in part by the state general fund. And so if we have, since our property values are lower in our district, we only fund about $5 million of that $88 million from local taxpayers. The rest is from the state general fund. Okay, and the reason I bring that up is because as we get into things like the override, that is 100% paid for by the local taxpayers. The state does not provide any funding for that override. And that's why we go out to the voters to ask for that override, because they are the ones that ultimately pay for that. So we're looking at about $13.7 million of income from that override. The DSEG funds, similar situation, it's it's in the local for local taxpayers, about 4.6 million. That transfer to energy and water savings, if you recall, we have the lease lease purchase agreement for our energy efficiency upgrades, like the solar panels, those types of things that cannot be funded from M&amp;O. But the state, the the auditor general does have kind of a caveat in there that you can transfer some of your M&amp;O funds over to the Energy and Water Savings Fund in order to then be able to pay that lease purchase agreement back, if you will. Prop 123, Prop 123 has been in the news quite a bit, that additional amount. There is some Prop 123 that's embedded in that total revenue control limit that we anticipate anticipate sticking around, but Prop 123, the additional funds there, it's uncertain and probably not going to happen where there's additional funding there. I guess depending upon which budget passes. But so we didn't include that for the FY26 budget, so that is a decrease of about $830,000. There is also in this year's budget, a one-time in FY25 budget, a one-time free and reduced-price lunch and district additional assistance add-on. Again, depending upon which budget you're looking at, unsure if that would continue on. So for FY26, to be conservative, we remove that from the budget, that's about $1 million. Adding all that together, that's about $104.8 million that we're looking at for our total M&amp;O budget. We are anticipating about $7.2 million carryover from this from FY25 to give the total available M&amp;O funds to be about $112 million. But if you look at back at the total M&amp;O allocation, so if we kind of take out that carryforward because that's really our savings account, we don't want to dig into that, we're looking at a reduction right now of about $4 million over last year. So how do we kind of make that back up, if you will? How do we we close the budget to make sure that we are balanced and balanced moving forward? And so if we take a look at what our FY25 expenditures were at this point and what we anticipate moving forward, it's about $110.6 million, our FY26 allocation, we're saying is about $104.8 million. So we have to kind of close that gap. Once again, I am anticipating, and I do feel pretty strongly that whatever budget is passed, it will include the 2% base level increase, and so that's where that $1.7 million is. And then if we look at the table to the right, where we took a look at some of our savings, the teacher reduction, staffing to the standard, meaning we took a look at what our anticipated student enrollment loss was going to be, and calculated that out of how many teachers that we we did not need because we had less students, and that equated to about $2.16 million in savings. We looked through everything other than staffing to see were there some some reductions that we could make there and still make sure that we operate a strong instructional program. And we came up with about $1.25 million, and again, that 63 through 68 would be supplies, consultants, utilities, those types of things. The childcare reduction, so we we talked a lot about the employee childcare, that reduction. So childcare is currently paid from Medicaid funds. However, if we free up those Medicaid funds with the savings from childcare, we then can utilize, we can move .5 of our school psychologists over from the M&amp;O fund over to that Medicaid fund. And so that's where about the million dollars in savings of M&amp;O funds will come in. Some other staffing reductions that we had, so we we collapsed some positions. You know, again, took a look really deep deeply at especially district office positions. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at district office positions before school positions. We were able to save about $866,000 there. We do have some increases that we're anticipating, so increases for anybody. We talked about teacher increases coming from classroom site funds, but ESP increases on that salary schedule, admin on that increases on that salary schedule would be M&amp;O funds, which is about a $600,000 increase to M&amp;O, and then the medical insurance increase, about $665,000 to M&amp;O. So adding all those together, we're looking at a total kind of $4 million in savings, if you will. So if we go back to that table on the left, when we add kind of the expenditures minus our allocation, but we increased that 1.7, we saved that 4 million. We're looking at a deficit now of only about $52,000, which in a $104 million budget is pretty negligible. So so that's our anticipation. Now, of course, this is all based on if the students show up in August, because again, this is all projections. We are on, remember, M&amp;O is current year funding, so we don't know what our budget actually is until next year on the 100th day, when we can make some of those calculations. But once once kids show up in August, we have a general idea of what that's going to look like, at least, so. That's M&amp;O. Moving on to capital, this one's a little bit easier. Again, the capital funding, so FY25, FY26, this is on prior year. So pretty confidently can say that our average daily membership that that will be used to base a budget for capital is about 12,266, still a reduction from FY25. The funding per ADM, we're keeping it the same again, not knowing what the budget is going to look like from the state at 500 and about $550 per ADM, gives us our base allocation of about $6.7 million, a reduction from last year of about $174,000. We do interest, as that money sits in the bank, it does earn interest. In the M&amp;O fund, we can't utilize that money for additional budget capacity, but we can on the capital side. So having some of that money in the bank will earn interest, and so you have about $250,000 interest earning, gives us close to $7 million for that allocation. Again, we do have about $11.7 million in carryforward, but that's our our savings there that we don't want to dig into if we don't need to. But it does have an available capital funds of about $18.7 million. Again, though, this is a reduction over last year, and we have kind of spent dug into our savings, if you will, this year as well. So looking at how we're going to close the gap here, the expenditures for FY25 were about $8.2 million. So the allocation, about $7 million, we have about $1.2 million to find. And if we take a look at over on the savings chart, student Chromebooks, we are going to need to replace student Chromebooks. We're estimating that's going to cost about $1 million from capital. But some savings like our Microsoft renewal, we saved about $100,000. The technology projects, we will not have, we've already outfitted those classrooms, so that will save us about $1.5 million over the FY25 expenditures. Some fire panels, curriculum, the governing board room that we did with those with capital funds, we won't have those expenditures again this next year. So again, that will save about $1.3 million. We take a look, that actually gives us a surplus of about $84,000 in capital. What I will say with that, though, is that we are anticipating and going out currently for textbook adoption. So that's not included in here, so that will be in textbook adoptions. They're not cheap, unfortunately, but those would be kind of a one-time payment from capital that would be coming sometime next year. Taking a look at classroom site funds, so classroom site funds is based off of that weighted average daily membership that we talked about, so the average daily membership with that multiplier. Again, this is based on prior year, so I can pretty confidently say it's going to be close to 14,200 ADM. Multiplied by, they were able to give us an adjusted allocation here for classroom site funds. So it's increases by $50 per average daily membership, so that will increase that base allocation by about $440,000. This is also a fund where you can utilize your interest for the money in the bank for your capacity. So that gives us a total classroom site fund allocation of about $12.4 million. We have that good chunk of carryforward as well to give us that available capital funds of about, sorry, that should say, classroom site funds of $34 million. We don't have to cut anything because, as you can see, we only spent, we did not spend as much if we look at our carryforward, we actually had $4.4 million savings in that fund. And then just taking a look at some of our other funds. So those are the major ones, M&amp;O, we talked about M&amp;O, capital, classroom site fund, but some of the other funding sources that we have here is the district bond building. We have about $4.6 million remaining in that fund. Adjacent ways, we have about $4.3 million there. Instructional improvement, about $2.656 million. Then we get our federal grants, so Title I, current allocation right now about $7.3 million. Title II, $700,000. Title III, $530,000. These do not include carryover amounts, so there will be some carryover amounts for each of these buckets. But again, I didn't want to include those because we don't want to dig into those if we don't need to. Title IV, $505,000. 21st Century, $240,000. IDEA, about $2.7 million. Then we have a couple other grants, they're actually on the agenda today for approval. Systemic School Improvement, $135,000. Targeted School Improvement, $25,000. And then our School Safety Grant, which funds our SROs, about $826,000. So let's talk about the impact of tax rates on, so the budget has on the tax rates here. So as we take a look at the assessment value, the assessment value from FY25 to FY26 went up close to $20 million, which is good. Generally, when the tax rate goes up, that means the when the when the assessment value goes up, the tax rate goes down, which is what we saw here when we look at the qualifying tax rate. So the qualifying tax rate is a state-set rate, which basically looks at all the school districts in the state and says, how much money do we need for that state general fund? They calculate what that is and come up with that qualifying tax rate. So every district, every K-8 district, because high schools actually have that have that double, but for K-8 districts, about 1.56, down from about 1.59 percentage for that that QTR. The transportation support, so the money raised for that transportation revenue control limit is about impact of about .1061 on the tax rate. Adjacent ways, as you can see, last year, we did levy, asked the governing board to levy for adjacent ways, which was about .3420 tax rate. We did not ask for the governing board to pass another adjacent ways levy. We had about $4 million we saw in that fund right now. So if we can save the taxpayers some money, we can utilize any of those funds that we have at this point if we do have an adjacent ways project in the future. Tax resolution and judgment, this comes from the county, so at this point, we we have zero. We don't know what that will look like until they set that in August, but last year is about .0118. But adding those together, the primary tax rate then for our taxpayers is about 1.6667. Again, looking at our desegregation, our M&amp;O override, our bonds, these are what's called the secondary tax rates. These are levied completely on the taxpayers of the district to fund school district programs. So the impact for the tax rate for the DSEG money is about 1.2, for the M&amp;O override, about 3.56, and for the bonds, about 1.6448. So the secondary tax rate is about 6.41, making that total tax rate about 8.0771. As you can see, that decreased from last year by about .3384, which equates to about 34 cents less per $100 assessed value over the last year. And again, it makes sense because if we're collecting the same amount of money and our property value is going up, the percent rate would go down. I like to show this slide when we talk about tax rates because oftentimes we look at tax rates and we talk about per $100,000 assessed value, and people will, myself included, until I understood tax rates, would go on things like Zillow, and they'd see their house at $400,000, and they'd be like, oh, my gosh, I'm paying 800 for every $100,000. I mean, my tax bill is going to be outrageous. But if you remember, there's kind of the Zillow rate, there's the full cash value rate, and then there's a limited property value rate. And that limited property value rate is what the tax rate is calculated based on. So we have some examples up here, so you can see that if your your house is $400,000, you're not paying on a $400,000 assessed value house, you're only paying about $63,000 assessed value. And I did a quick calculation based on that. So if we take a look at that first house here, that's $63,547. There is kind of a multiplier of 10%, and so that assessment value rate is about $6,354. We divide that for every $100, gives us about 63.55. Multiply that by what that tax rate was, the 8.0771, gives a tax bill for Cartwright. And of course, we we all know we have a lot of other things on those tax bills, but for Cartwright, for that value of house is about $513.30, again, down about $20 or so over last year. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the governing board.
All right.
Hello, I do have a question.
Thank you, Dr. Etheridge, for that, and I believe there is a question. Board member Romero.
Were the cuts to teachers and staffing done through attrition, or did we lay off staff members?
President Hernandez, Board Member Romero, that's an excellent question. So for teachers, it was through attrition.
Okay.
And as of right now, the only one, there have been a couple other positions that we have eliminated with people in them. We have, for the most part, been able to find other positions if those people wanted to move. So but for the teachers, it's all been through attrition.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Cantu?
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Etheridge. On page. Over here, give me one second. The cost for the auditing.
Of the audit?
Yes, there's a difference on, how do you say, from year '25 to year '26, due to the fact that the ADM, it's it's a.
Madam President, Board Vice President Cantu, the audit expense, just like every other expense, it goes up every so the the company, we have a five-year agreement with the company, every year, it's it goes up a couple thousand dollars. So next year, we expect it to be more than $48,000 as well.
It's not based on ADM?
It is not based on ADM, no.
There is less students. Okay, just a question for clarification. Thank you very much, Dr. Etheridge.
So the amounts keep going up with our contractors, but. So the amounts keep going up with our contractors, but you know, our salary, I mean, our, our monies are not going up with it.
And that's why.
With the cost of inflation.
That's where I refer to.
And so there's been a lot of information here, a lot of information, a lot of descriptors about the different funding sources. Some of which are restrictive that we've mentioned in the past, so we can't say, hey, by the way, I noticed that you have four million dollars in that fund. You know, Dr. Etheridge, why don't you just move it, just move it. It, it doesn't work that way, so there is a process and they're, we're guided by state law in terms of how and for what we're able to use our funding sources. I wanted to go back and for the, the beginning part, we talked about the, oh, we are at the A D M. You know, I, I was kind of taken aback when I first reviewed this. Part of the process, as I've mentioned in the last few meetings, that the Board President meets and or the, the Vice President. Meet with the Superintendent to review what's going to be on the agenda. We have any questions then, we decide together whether, you know, how we, what we present and what if it's, you know, so we don't get overwhelmed or go, you know, attach it, what's time sensitive, what's not. And so we have the opportunity, but I was taken aback with, with the, with the students, even though we've been, we've, we've been tracking that there's been five hundred. There's been an average loss over the last few years of at least five to six hundred, but when I saw the, you know, this, the number twelve, two hundred and sixty six. Because it wasn't so long ago that we were the largest elementary in the state, and we were at nineteen thousand, and all the sites were full. And so we're listening, you know, every day that, you know, there's districts that are closing schools. We saw ourselves in a position to do so a few years back. Which is why, and I'd like to, I'm, I'm open about being fiscally conservative somewhat, in the sense that. When we have a, a certain amount, such as, I'm just going to keep referring out to the four million that we can't touch, right, but except for specific purposes that. We, we need to take care. We saw ourselves in a position and reviewing their numbers early on, when I first came on board, because we had lived a life of luxury over the last few years. Not compared, I mean, compared to other districts, I mean, everybody had an opportunity to take advantage of the COVID funding, the S R funding. We had, you know, we had resources, and so with those resources, we put them to use, we're not going to return them, right, we're going to use them. Especially if we think that it's going to increase our academic achievement, you know, the, you know, providing a great service to our community members. And so we, we created a lot of positions, I call them the cushy, not that we're cushy, we need them. However, we had, we had the funding available, and so we created a district office, there were a lot of, you know, district level positions that were. That were not in the same, you know, situations or conditions anymore. So we found ourselves in a position to have to make some cutbacks, so we had to review everything to see where, what. What we could make any impacts or changes on, so that we could be in a good position moving forward, is all. And so I think, Ms. Cantu, over the years, I, and I'll always remember, and I laugh about it, although it's not funny. But she says during budget, especially during tighter budget times. We all know each other, but all of a sudden, we start looking at each other, we all look different and smell different, we're no longer friends. Because it's, those are difficult decisions to make, and I just wanted to have an opportunity to, to make sure that. That we do our due diligence and that we're being transparent and sharing the numbers. When we come to making difficult decisions, you know, what it is, this is an opportunity for us to talk. It's really a meeting of the board for us to talk about our rationale, if we have any questions, do we understand it, moving forward. So having said that, and having just reviewed a lot of our funding sources, our budget, do I have any other questions?
Just one more question, Madam President, Dr. Etheridge.
Ms. Cantu?
The difference on average daily membership, A D M, between year twenty five and year twenty six is based on. Say, I want to say it again, so we can, everybody can understand. It's the decrease on enrollment, and those numbers are based from the year, the previous year, correct?
Madam President, Vice President Cantu, so for M and O, yeah, for, sorry, for capital, classroom site fund, those are based on the prior year. For M and O, those are based on current year, so this eleven thousand eight ninety six, that is a, I don't want to say a guess. Because we have historical data, we have demographic studies, so it's, but it is a prediction, we, we could have eleven thousand five hundred kids show up on August fourth, or when we start school. Or we could have twelve thousand two hundred kids show up on, on August fourth. All the data that we have is showing us that from, from twenty five to twenty six, we're going to see a decrease of about three hundred and seventy A D M for next year, so that's our best prediction. Last year, we predicted pretty accurately, in fact, more kids showed up than what we predicted. So we're hopeful that that will happen again this year, but unfortunately, there's some other political climate things going on that.
Unfortunately, yes, and that's where I was heading, that, I mean, this number can, can, you know, comfortable, but don't. Don't be so happy, so excited, because the political climate is changing across the nation, so. God knows.
Yeah, and Madam President, Vice President Cantu, to kind of expand on that a little bit further, and for our community. This trend is going to continue, everything that we have with demographic studies and things like that is showing that we will, we will be decreasing at least this amount for the next several years. We're looking at, you know, positively getting down to about ten thousand kids in about ten years.
But that's supposed to happen in twenty thirty.
So that's, so over the, that's what I'm saying, over, and, and so, so with that being said, is that as we're talking about some of these budget issues and talking about, you know. Finding savings and those types of things, that, that's going to continue next year, it's going to continue the year after, it's going to continue the year after, because. We just don't have any data to show that we're going to be in a situation where we're going to have excess funds to say, okay, great, what, what can we do with those? It's going to be discussions of how do we continue to find efficiencies. You know, to, to, to make sure that we have a sustainable budget and we can move forward, and again, as I said before, as a business manager. I, of course, look at this year, I of course look at next year, but I'm looking at two, three, four years down the road. So that we, and making some of these decisions now, so that they're a little bit less drastic than if we say, no, we're going to sustain it as is, and four years down the road. Be like, yikes, now we have to cut fifteen million dollars by next year and have those types of, types of things.
I just wish the best to all the school districts across the nation, because with what's going on, and everybody's going to be impacted and we all going to be impacted.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge, for your presentation, it's very informative, and I'll tell you, those twenty dollars extra. Or savings on my, my taxes, my taxes, I will willingly give them to, you know, to better the situation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I just also, Dr. Etheridge, wanted to mention that in one of the presentations that, in one of the committees that I serve. The Auditor General's presentation pointed out several school districts that, that they've, that they've marked. As they see the A D M decrease, as it's hurtful. It's going, it, it goes into the equation of what they anticipate, how we're going to be doing moving forward as a district. And so that's one of the negatives that we have, and that's public, public information, public record. How school districts are doing, somebody can just log on and go online to the Auditor General's report and also see the academic achievement, everything, the tech, I mean, your, the amount of dollars. That go to the classroom, et cetera, food services, transportation, you name it. So it's no secret, and so that, we are in there, because I saw, and they pointed out Cartwright. So I'm not inventing these things, we are, we are, it's just, just giving us, giving us an opportunity or a nudge, you know, to keep. To keep, to keep on the lookout, to monitor. And so I'm looking forward to continue to work with them moving forward, and with that, since there are no other, we do have call to the public regarding the, the budget. And I have Ms. Cecilia Moreno, the district budget.
Good evening, I am Cecilia Moreno, taxpayer, district resident, and concerned citizen. My question today is for Dr. Etheridge, thank you. Last meeting, you presented the district budget that included teacher salaries. You also explained that the money for salaries comes from separate funds, and you did a good job of explaining that today, thank you. Other than those allocations coming from capital maintenance and insurance, et cetera. Since Mr. Watkins refuses to resign from his illegally appointed post as Superintendent, does.
Ms. Moreno.
I have three minutes.
This is regarding the budget, and we will not tolerate insults or attacks against our staff. I've made it clear, I've been very gracious, will allow you to continue, so as long as there are no attacks and no.
Does the district have enough money to continue to pay him, Mrs. Haudicki, along with Mrs. Farrar and Dr. Ghadhaba? They were placed on leave without due process. In addition, does the district have enough money to sustain three lawsuits and the cost incurred if the district were to have to pay out the losses? And what fund does this money come from? I know you cannot respond at this time, but I would appreciate a response, and I have left my email at the sign in table. I know that you will be totally disappointed, all of you, but I will not be able to attend the next board meeting and possibly the one after. I will be attending my grandson's graduation in Manchester, England. Upon my return, I will once again be here waiting for some answers and advocating for the students at taxpayers, I yield.
Sorry, for a moment, I thought it was in the congressional session, but I, just for clarification regarding. The comments, over the last three meetings, we've covered continuous discussions from, I think, February forward. Budget discussions, explanations, transitions, as we just covered as well with this additional budget presentation. But thank you for the comments. And we will be moving, I'm adjourning, the public hearing portion of the meeting. And please let the record reflect that it is now six forty three, and we will be resuming the regular governing board meeting. And first. I think I'm confused here, we just finished the public, but I do have a. Yeah, call to the public regarding, that's the first item on the agenda for the regular governing board meeting, which is, okay, throwing me off. Do we have any call to the public on the regular, regarding the regular governing board meeting? Thank you, so this is the call to the public for the regular governing board meeting. Consider, this is regarding call to the public, consideration and possible discussion of comments and complaints from the public. The governing board will not take any legal action on matters raised during this portion of the meeting unless the comments and complaints pertain to the items included on the agenda. The governing board president will set applicable time limits based on the number of public comments received, up to a three minute time limit is set, and all are asked to adhere to this limit. The governing board may direct staff to study matters raised by the public or to reschedule those matters for future consideration, discussion, and possible action at a later date. I'd like to also mention. That's where the consent, I'm sorry, and I'm looking for the regular call to the public. Here we go, found it. So the, and I just read that. So we call to the public R. I have a Mr. Ramon Lopez, this is regarding consent agenda item number two. Regarding concerns about the district. Mr. Ramon Lopez, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to, to make out the second, but concerns about the district.
Everyone able to hear me? Okay, perfect, so. Good evening, today I'm not just here as an employee of our district, but as a resident, taxpayer, and homeowner in Maryville. I hope that my time today will be respected and that I am allowed to speak without interruptions. I grew up in Maryville, I always dreamed of working in the district I grew up in and hopefully inspire other kids like myself to try their hardest, never give up. And to always speak up for what is right, even when their voice shakes. I want to do just that. For the last few months, I have watched every board meeting, and it is embarrassing to see what this board has done to the reputation of our district. Every month, I expect an email from the Arizona Republic with a new headline involving our district. Just received this last week, Arizona's most dysfunctional school board, nepotism, mismanagement, and chaos, stacking the committee, and they got a new lawyer. With all due respect, Mr. Watson, where the heck did you come out of? And why is our district suddenly millions of dollars in debt, cuts happening already for next year? And yet here we are, paying for god knows how many superintendents and other employees who are now on admin leave. Have we not learned what is happening next door with the Isaac School District? Nigh the nettle to provide teachers and employees help with their children's daycare, pero otras cosas así. When I vote to approve boards and overrides for this district, when I don't even have children of my own. I expect my elected officials to always do what's best for kids, their academic success, and their future. I will admit that I voted for most of you sitting here tonight. Madam Board President, how dare you cut the mics and not allow other members to explain or even cast their vote? What type of Russian or North Korean powers do you think come with holding that gavel? We have enough drama nowadays with the criminal sitting in the White House and his administration. We have ice in our neighborhoods, making our families and kids afraid to go outside, stop all this nonsense. Our district does not need any more lawsuits, now we're being accused of, of harassing a former board member and her child who attends one of our schools? We have enough people talking down on our neighborhood and schools, please stop adding to it. I'm not just here to complain, but to share some solutions. You want transparency, hold regular town halls when, where our community and staff members can address any issues that come up. Make yourself available, don't just leave immediately after board meetings to avoid questions. You have every right as the board to dismiss and do changes of staff, but please do it the right way. I also work for Phoenix Union High School, their hiring process for a new superintendent involved community town halls, surveys, and input for, from parents, students, and staff. I'm sure Mr. Watson is a good guy and could be a great superintendent, but how can you expect any trust when he just appeared out of nowhere? As adults and educators, we must lead by example and show our youth how even when our differences of opinions, or when we don't like someone, we can still be civil, respectful, and get things done. Our district is just another group project, it just happens to be a really big one. Parents, families, all of you who are watching online today, pay attention and get involved in what is happening in our district and schools. I thank you for your time, and if you ever happen to be at Harris, please stop by room forty six so you could see all the amazing work that is happening with my eighth graders. I hope everyone is enjoying their summer and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and be, before you walk away, just for clarification. I believe there was an explanation in the presentation regarding the budget for the childcare center, and there was a town hall, a recent town hall, so there's been some activities that, that has taken place. Where we've been responding to, and only because those have been on the agenda before, just for clarification. So there's a lot of comments, I think, that, that, that you've made that are not accurate and are not true. But I would love to sit down and, and fill you in, and I could also point out the meetings that would help provide you with the information that you're asking for.
Do you mind if I just ask you a quick question about the daycare? Because there was this town hall, I know it's during the summer, I just got engaged in my, our plans are to pretty much start having a family here, and of course, I want my kids to come to this district, I grew up in this district. I wouldn't work in a school if I wouldn't feel okay bringing my nieces and my nephews and my own kids there. But when you're sitting here and you're saying that you have this town hall, I'll be honest with you, my fiance works for her district, I work for the district. There are so many employees and coworkers that I work with, we never got no email. I would have gladly gone to a, and talked about this daycare because it's going to affect me. One of the reasons why I want to work for this district is because of that benefit. One of the reasons why I want to work for this district is because of that benefit. And then there's all these rumors of people losing their jobs and all sorts of things happening. So I just wanted to come and just throw my two cents and say that our community deserves better. And if we can't get along, what type of example are we setting not only for our community, but also to our children? So I just ask that we just be respectful and please let everyone talk because everyone got elected just like all of you.
Well, thank you. But there are some protocols, and I hope that we can, we can continue a conversation. I'd like to invite you and provide you with that information, but we do follow some board governance rules, and also we are not going to tolerate, and it's also not allowed, for attacks in our, of our staff nor our members. That's just respect. But thank you for being here. Thank you for being interested, and hopefully we can follow up.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate it. So thank you for saying that you would like to talk to me at some point, so I look forward to doing that. Appreciate it.
One question real quick, what, what school did you stay?
So I teach at CW Harris, but I also used to teach at Desert Sands, and I grew up in our neighborhood in it. Attended Desert Sands myself.
Thank you. I wrote down the room number.
Okay, yeah, no, feel free, feel free to come down. And I'll be back, and sorry to take more of your time, but we'll also be having a Ruby Bridges Walk at CW Harris. Last year, I came and invited everyone, so I'll be coming back with another group of students to invite all of you again.
All right, thank you.
Have a good summer.
Thank you. Thank you, excuse me, regarding the, the walk, I was there last year, and it was amazing. You had such a great community turnout and support.
And I haven't, like, ran into any of you, but I just wanted to thank you for showing up. I know we had some, our state senator from the neighborhood show up as well. It's a great thing, so hopefully you guys are able to join us again this upcoming November.
Oh, I see, I see the connection. Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. And we also have Ms. Leslie King.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Leslie King, and I've worked in the district for over twenty years as a teacher, an assistant principal, and now as the director of early childhood. It's been my home, and I love it. Tonight, you will find my name on the consent agenda as a resignation, and I'm here to share why. I want to tell my own story because after two decades of service, I believe I've earned that. Let me begin with what isn't the reason. It's, I am not leaving because of the employee childcare phase out. I don't love the decision, but I understand it. The economics simply are not sustainable. And while difficult, I support the thoughtful way that it has been handled. This is not a protest. I'm also not leaving because of any one person. Some people I respected. Others I didn't know well. Some I liked, and some liked me. So that's just work. But I'll admit the absence of a more intentional transition plan has been hard. When you're leaving an entire early childhood program and your resignation receives only, let me know if I can assist before your last day, with no follow-up, no collaborative planning, no real conversations about what comes next. I was left wondering, not with anger, but with sadness, if what I have given has really landed in the way that I intended. I wish that that part felt different. I also believe our meet and confer group has been given too much influence. I support educator voice deeply. I was a CEA member for multiple years, but when district-level time is spent rehashing preschool party policies, as one example, example, multiple times, instead of addressing instruction, systems, and support, we've lost focus. This is not okay. Here is what is at the center of my decision. It is the governing board, or more specifically, the dysfunction on display at most every meeting. An Arizona school board members are elected or appointed to ensure students receive a quality education. They set policy, they approve budgets, they evaluate superintendents, and advocate for public schools. They are expected, especially in times of chaos, to rise above division and work for the common good. This isn't, this is not happening. Instead, we see yelling, personal attacks, silencing of the public, meetings adjourned mid-session, and shouting matches in front of our students. This is not leader, this is not leadership, this is chaos. Meanwhile, the real work suffers. Staff are afraid to speak and afraid to not speak for fear of retaliation. This is not a psychologically safe workplace. This is not okay. I want to be clear, I am not here to bash. I do not know who is fully right or fully wrong, and I suspect the truth lies somewhere in the murky middle. But I do know this, we've stopped asking the one question that really matters, what's best for kids, what's best for kids. I was not in favor of how the leave of absences were handled, and I believe the community deserves transparency. That said, I've watched our current acting interim superintendent lead with steadiness and respect in the midst of chaos, and I recognize that. Our job, all of us, is to cha, is to send children home safe, to help them grow, and raise them up to get back to the world more than they take. I love this district. I believed I would retire here as I am eligible in April. I'm proud of the work that I've done, especially in early childhood, and I will continue to advocate for kids. But I can't keep doing this work in a place where the focus has been lost. I'm not leaving bitter. I am leaving clear. When I was an assistant principal. I used to tell middle schoolers, especially when they were in trouble, that their actions did not define them. I would say, yes, there are consequences, but you are not your worst choice. You get to make a better one tomorrow. I still believe that, and I believe that for Kurt Wright as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. And we have the consent agenda before us. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
I have a second, Madam President, and I also have a question in one of the items.
Okay. Which, which item is that?
That's number thirty-seven. And that's a question for, for Mr. Etheridge. Can we see that on the screen, Mr. Etheridge? Item thirty-seven?
We have the agenda on the screen. In the consent, are we able to see the consent? Item number thirty-seven. And that's the approval of human resource personnel items.
Page four, please.
Okay, I don't think that they're able, I know that they're able to pull up the agenda, but not the, broken down. Could you ask your question and perhaps, or?
I, I think, I, I assume this was on, on the consent agenda, public side, correct?
It is. It is in the consent agenda as item thirty-seven, but the only thing you're gonna see is the approval of human resource personnel items. But the public is able to see. I'm just saying for our purposes to be able to show it up, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, Dr. Etheridge, on page four, on the, can you, can you read that for me, please, where it says stipends?
So, so the names of the people?
Just the one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, without names. But, oh, you got it, okay, perfect. Page four. And hopefully you can enlarge that. It's page four.
And then, because the stipends she's looking at, so the first. Scroll up a little bit, right there.
Can we, can you enlarge this a little bit, please, so the, the public will be able to see it? Okay, move a little bit to the, to the left. To the left. Right, more. It doesn't
Not on the public view?
Excuse me? It's not available for the public, or why it's not?
Dr. Etheridge, could you explain what, what this is?
Yes, Madam President, Vice President Cantu, so, under the performance pay, so, in the, the contracts for executive administrators, so executive administrators, deputy superintendents, assistant superintendents, there is a clause in there that they are eligible for a ten percent performance pay.
Okay. But the numbers are not there.
The numbers are not on the, on the public facing.
And is that, Dr. Etheridge, because it is something that's written into contract? I'm just asking.
Madam President, so, so generally, so in the, the past practice has been that we, for any amount, so, so there's no amounts on this list at all, anywhere. So even when we talk about contract approval for teachers or extra pay for extra duty, those types of things, we have put the amounts in the executive content. And, and the public facing that way now, that could be a discussion with the board president and the superintendent, and if that president wants to change.
I just wanted to show transparency to the public as well, because there is superintendent's office personnel receiving, can I say?
This is a, a, perhaps large amounts. This is called a pay-for-performance.
Yes, and, and that was my question, pay-for-performance for the superintendent's office or executive, I mean superintendent's assistance to the superintendent. And that stipend is based on pay-for-performance, correct? When was that approved?
Madam President, Vice President Cantu, the, the contract, like the idea of the
This particular stipend was approved yesterday?
So this, so, Madam President, Vice President Cantu, this wa, was in the contract template, which for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year was approved in February of the governing board, February of twenty-four. And then the actual contracts themselves were approved in April. March, March, March of twenty-twenty-four. So the contract templates in February, and then the actual contracts themselves were approved in March of twenty-twenty-four, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, correct?
Yeah, that was my question, because what I see here and the performance, it doesn't ma, match to me. So that's what I wanted to, for, for transparency purposes, and for my personal opinion, I mean, is, it doesn't match, so I wanted to present it publicly.
And, and I think just moving forward, it's, it's really understanding what that pay, because it sounds like pay-for-performance, but it was a decision actually that goes further back. Maybe I'm gonna say twenty-twenty-three, if I recollect correctly. So it was something that was put into contracts for the executive team. But there's, we're not able to change, change up because it's a contract that's previously been, and it's been voted on, so.
And, and the reason I'm questioning is because it doesn't reflect on the student achievement. And that pay-for-performance is because you perform well, you deserve certain amount. And I don't have a problem with that, but I don't see the performance, and that's where I have concerns. But, and it's not personal, it's just an observation that I want to make it clear to.
Madam, Madam President, are we going over, I'm sorry?
No.
Are we, are we going over action item number thirty-five?
No, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, of hu, approval of human resource?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just got back, I had to use the restroom. So these pay, performance pay, how is that evaluated or looked at for as, as far as performance, like, does it, it varies from the positions and what?
Madam President, Board Member Hernandez, so generally, it was based on the, the person's evaluation.
There's, there's a lot of, a lot of reviews and looking into evaluations, systems that we have in place, I think, to, to, to answer your question, Ms. Cantu. Moving forward, it's something that we obviously did not pass. Obviously, we didn't discuss, and we, it was previously discussed and, and voted on by the then majority of the board and previous leadership of the district. And I want to point out that Mr. Watson is not included in this. But you're right, I think it's something that we, that needs further looking into and discussions. But because it's something that's already been, you know, action was taken on, we're, you know, we're bound to, to honor that. So, and, and I do believe that it needs to be correlated to the academic achievement of the district, which at this point has been the reading proficiency is at four percent for the entire population. You know, that, we just need a lot of work. I think a lot of work in revamping and reevaluating, looking at our assessment systems. A lot of conversations, a lot of work. But thank you, thank you for your, your interest and your question, and we'll be moving forward. And I think I just lost the page that I was, where we're at. So we're based, we're, we gotta do the roll call vote. So Ms. Cantu, this is regarding the consent agenda as presented. I move that we accept the agenda as presented, and we're going into a roll call vote. How do you vote? Because you've already seconded.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez, this is, we're voting on the consent agenda as presented.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Denise Garcia, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and motion carries. So that is the consent agenda. We're going on to other action items. We need to, this is the approval to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual expenditure budget and twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six desegregation budget.
Madam President, governing board members, the administration recommends the approval to adopt the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual expenditure budget and twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six desegregation budget as presented.
Do I have a motion? I mean, do I have a second? Sorry. I move. Add I move to the, to the item, I move to approve the, and adopt the twenty-twenty-five, The twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual expenditure budget and twenty-five, twenty-six desegregation budget, do I have a second?
I second, Madam President.
Thank you, we're going to a roll call vote, and Ms. Kantu, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Kantu, and Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, and Ms. Jennifer Romero, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, and Ms. Denise Garcia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye, and motion carries. We're still under other action items, and I'm moving to uh, item number two, overview and approval to increase. Not to exceed amounts for various vendors for expenses incurred in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, Dr. Etheridge.
Madam President, Governing Board Members, so we know during this year, um, we sent a not to exceed list, as well as some individual not to exceed amounts. Um, to the governing board for your approval, however, we also know that there was kind of some issues at the beginning of the year, making sure that we get some of these. Um, to the, before the governing board for approval. And so this, as we are kind of wrapping up our books and finalizing all of those, the, the invoices and things like that to pay vendors. We have currently eight vendors on this list, um, where we have expenditures that exceed the prior approved amount. So going through these, we look at um, Acel and ACES, both are special services, these are private placement, um. Students attend for private placement services, um, these were situations where the, the prior not to exceed amount. There was kind of some miscommunication between schools, because the school I U P team are the ones who determine kind of the placement of the students. And so some miscommunication between uh, schools and special services to make sure that we bring that amount to the governing board prior to. Authorizing those students to attend those schools, and so for Acel, that's an additional about ten thousand dollars needed. Um, to pay those bills, and for ACES, about an additional six thousand dollars. CCS, um, the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, these are for the additional screens, um, so back in October. Um, we authorized CCS to um, add some additional projection screens to the Steve Girodo Event Center. Um, but the prior authorized approval amount from the governing board did not, um, was not enough to cover those additional expenditures. So that's about an additional four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Fusebox, um, this one is the one where we get two services from Fusebox, we get a preventative maintenance. Um, for our solar panels from Fusebox, and we also get kind of a utility tracking services. So the utility tracking services came first, that started on July first in the amount of about seventy-five thousand dollars. And then later, we did bring to the governing board for approval that preventative maintenance for the solar panels at about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The problem is, is that the governing board authorized that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar one, but now because with that vendor, we put us over. The hundred thousand dollars to be about two hundred thousand dollars, we never got that additional approval from the governing board. To really pay for that original purchase of that um, tracking services. Meteor education, um, meteor education was one um, for the remodel, um, Harris School, this was one as we were working through. Um, we actually anticipated to do a little bit more remodeling with Harris's cafeteria because it was small, um, that we did not move forward with. So we, we purchased the furniture as we did with the other schools, but that was purchased again prior to um. Prior to governing board approval. Navigate three sixty, navigate three sixty is a vendor who does a few different things, one of the things they do is. Um, map our school district for safety purposes, so now we have a, a mapping to where we, where um, emergency. Um, services can come and they, we have maps of the buildings and where things are located and, and things like that. But it also provides for s- for schools, what's called PBIS rewards, and schools will have, um, like. Like their ID badges, will have a barcode on that, and so when they're caught doing something good, they give a point for that badge, and so they scan that in. So Navigate three sixty is the vendor for that, and so as schools were purchasing these items. And then we went out and did the mapping services that together put the, the, the expenditures over a hundred thousand dollars for that vendor, so. It was a variety of different purchases there, that just was not brought to the governing board, so asking for about sixty-four hundred dollars to pay um. The, the rest of the bills for Navigate three sixty. R K S Plumbing, um, there were a few emergency water link leaks in the month of January. Um, at Heather Bray in Palm Lane, and so in order to get those fixed quickly, um, because it was leaking water. And we needed to make sure to, to get those fixed so that we didn't have to cancel school or anything like that, um, that vendor was the one that. Did both, um, came out to um, take a look at what was going on and kind of diagnose the problem. And then they also went through and repaired the problem, so there were the two expenditures there that put us over that not to exceed amount. And then finally, Veragey, um, there is an anticipated amount of how much would, we would spend on repairs for this, we had a maintenance agreement with them. But then the amount that we had set aside for kind of contingency for repairs, we did go over that amount by about fifty-three hundred dollars. So we're asking the governing board to approve that. This, I will say, um, be very transparent, this is not typical practice, um, we do not want to, nor is it. Nor, nor is it good to come back to the governing board after the fact and ask for approval amounts above and beyond that. We have, um, since we've kind of diagnosed the problem, uh, put some, some things in place moving forward. Um, so we have, in our purchasing department, we have um, several people taking a look at that, we've put alerts in our system so that if we're. Approaching and not to exceed amount, we know that, so we know to bring that to the governing board for approval. One of the things, um, again, just being very transparent, that we're trying to work through is. In order to make any purchase, you need a purchase order in place, so you need to enter a requisition, it gets turned into a purchase order, and that's the only way to. Do a purchase here in the district. The problem is, is that there are situations where some people, and, and I don't think it's intentional, but will kind of bypass that. So for example, registering for a conference, okay, they might go in and say, I'm gonna register for this conference, and they'll register for the conference. But the problem is without a purchase order in place, that's called an after the fact purchase. So from the, the purchasing department and business services side, we can monitor as purchase orders go through. We can easily monitor, and like I said, we put some systems in place to be able to say, hey, we're, we're getting close to that not to exceed threshold. We can't approve any more purchases until we go to the governing board for approval, but if someone goes out and makes a purchase. Without that purchase order in place, the, the, the purchasing department and business services would not know that until all of a sudden an invoice shows up. And say, that is the case, so that was the case, for example, for Acel and ACES, is some of these after the fact purchases, so we are working through a system. To, um, I, I don't wanna say be punitive, but we are working through a system that does hold people accountable. If they bypass some of those procedures and policies to, to do after the fact purchases, like registering for a conference or something like that. Without a purchase order in place, so I, I also again wanna be very transparent that I can never say this will never ever happen again. Because there may, sorry, there may be some situations that despite our best efforts, people are human, people make mistakes. As much as we try to put policies and procedures in place, um, they, they may go around that, but I can say that this. There will not be eight moving forward, we have definitely kind of corrected that, but we are asking the governing board to approve this because we do. Have bills to pay and for vendor relations, we just wanna make sure that we get those, those paid.
Okay, um. Thank you, uh, Dr. Etheridge, Ms. Kantu.
Uh, Mr. Etheridge. And you, you uh, make a, you make an example of uh, conference registration. But on this one where uh, there is uh. Um, the purchase order. For Harris. Can you elaborate on that one, please?
Uh, Madam President, Vice President Kantu, and maybe, I don't know if, if Dr. Madrana wants to, to help me, because I know he kind of oversaw that, but. I think this is one of the situations where we were replacing all the furniture at all of the schools, Harris was one that needed furniture. Um, there was a, a, a P O that went through to order that, that furniture. But the not to exceed amount never came to the board, because again, that was one thing that we, that we. Put into place now is that we have alerts in the system to say, hey, before we approve this purchase order, you're, you're at the not to exceed amount level. Which we didn't have back in December when that was approved.
It was approved in December, correct? But it's four hundred and nine thousand dollars?
Madam President, Vice President Kantu, yes, that was, so that was Harris, so this is the furniture, and so each school, we replaced furniture, cafeteria furniture at each school. At the cost of about four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars per school.
It's, it is, it is a concern, because it, it, it went out, it's the purchase that went out without governing board approval. That it's a concern to me, and I'm sure for the rest of the board, because there's another one here. Uh, additional projection screens were added to Steve Girodo Event Center, can you elaborate on that?
Madam President, Vice President Kantu, yes, so originally, I believe the design had three projectors on. I don't know what side wall that is. North, north side wall, thank you, north side wall, and as we were, um, as leadership was, was taking a look at the renderings. Um, decided to add three additional projections, two at the front, um, and then one at the back, so that way. The, the audience would be able to see better for those projection screens, um, but again, that was something that was. Put into place and ordered prior to making sure that there was governing board approval for that.
Before board approval, and when was that done, when do we receive?
Uh, that was back in October.
October of twenty-twenty-four.
Correct.
Um, Dr. Etheridge, I, I will like to say that I love this information, but I don't. And um, again, it's for uh, transparency purposes, so um. I think that uh, the board need to, and I'm sure they'll agree that this needs to change.
Madam President, Vice President Kantu, absolutely, and that, so you can even see like on, on the agenda for the consent agenda, there were several different contracts. So that was one thing when we brought the not to exceed list, last board meeting, I believe, is that even though we have a not to exceed amount. Um, I've been kind of clear to the staff that anything, any single contract over one hundred thousand dollars, we'll need to go to the board for approval before we approve that.
Thank you, Dr. Etheridge, and I hope that um, we can work on. On the process in the future, because this cannot be happening.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Kantu, I do want to state that um, we are in part of our streamlining and reviewing, and we are. I wanna share, I think, with, with our community that uh, the, the role of the board members, we are elected to review policy. So our focus is reviewing policy that provides oversight to the operations uh, of a school district. So, we have made a presentation uh, previously, I mean, with, there were a lot of interruptions, and I have to apologize for that. Every single meeting, I think, for the last few months, we've not been allowed to speak, but this is important data, important monies. Uh, that we wanna be able to share, and um, in a rush, uh, and making decisions in haste. Uh, there were a lot of mistakes that were made, and a lot of which involved not following policy and. Just taking action and approval without the board, uh, knowing of the, of what was, how the money was being spent. And that is a clear violation of not only policy, but our role, our board roles. Um, these are some that were the, being based on, on those assessments. Um, we have staff coming forward with, obviously there's P O's that I'm reviewing, that I'm saying, wait a minute. Uh, why are we paying an additional two million, what? So it's a constant, so when we look at a budget, I'm concerned. Because when we look at a budget and we make it known to the public, and then I have to go and sit with the uh, superintendent. And yet, oh, we have another two million, oh, there was an error made and it's four hundred and twenty thousand, and though, oh, by the way, we didn't take board action. We're not doing our due diligence, and I wanna make sure that we um, that we do it correctly, it's not that we don't want the products, it's we have, there's no reason. No reason why we shouldn't follow the process that's been established, uh, that we're here to follow, which is in policy. So we're also reviewing policy, and I think there's a one inch thick of changes having to do with procurement contracts and monies. Regarding those, those procedures, that we're going to go back to doing the way we're supposed to be doing them. So, if you add these numbers together, uh, this is quite a lot of money that uh, we're going to have making. That we're going to be making expenditures on, that we haven't accounted for yet, but will be reduced, so. When board members have repeated questions or, or members of the public regarding where's the money going, where's the one, you know, who's taking it, I'm stealing it. Uh, the money's here, but it needs to be expended in the proper way, and that's following our po- established policies. Thank you, uh, thank you, Dr. Etheridge, um, are there any?
Madam President, I just want to, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Etheridge, just wanna thank you for your, you did amazing, thank you, it's a lot of information, but. You know, writing my notes, I'm trying to make sure I capture and understand as best as I can, um, I just wanna say that I think this is an important, you know, I, I. Important thing that our district has, I'm appreciative of it, I feel like it keeps everybody aligned and in control with a big district, I think that's very important. Um, especially to our kids that, you know, there's ways to go about things, and um, so I just wanted to say that really quickly. Um, it's critical, you know, to our student achievement and making sure that we're bringing those kids back and see, and, and prospering these, these kids to become. Leaders, world changers, so I just wanted to say that, and so thank you, Mr. Etheridge.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, and I'm going on to, unless there's any other questions regarding this, I'm moving on to item H. For reports. I'm sorry, so I move that we uh, approve to increase not to exceed. The amounts for various vendors for expenses incurred in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is a, this is challenging still, but uh, we've gotta, we've gotta honor that, so uh, do I have a second?
So these are expend, expenditures prior to governing board approval, correct?
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam President.
Thank you, and I will proceed to a roll call vote, and Ms. Kantu, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Kantu, uh, Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, and uh, Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, and Ms. Denise Garcia, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and I vote aye. So we are covering our expenses moving forward. I have a report summary of current events, uh, I have our acting superintendent, Mr. Steve Watson, are you still there?
I am, Madam President, and I just wanna say, uh, thank you to, to you and the entire board, and I wanna say thank you to Dr. Etheridge. For um, helping with some of these uh, parts and procedures this evening. And we are doing everything that we can to make sure that we recognize uh, the responsibility of the board. Um, to approve the budget and to be responsible for policies and finances, and so we wanna make sure that, that everything we, we do. Um, you know, especially when it comes to, to finances, um, we do in a timely fashion, we, we keep the board in the know. Um, and so we appreciate uh, the action that you just uh, took to, to go back and uh, just clean up some things. So that we can pay our bills and that we're, we're good to the people who we have contracts with, so thank you for that. And I wanna give you an update, uh, on principal retreat that we had, it was a two-day principal retreat. Um, with uh, members of, of the administration, the executive team, and the principals and assistant principals, uh. Were, were, were all in attendance, and we have our, our student uh, data from this last year. Uh, Dr. Razo did a terrific job of getting the numbers together in a really timely fashion, she was on a kind of shortened schedule, she was going through all the numbers. That had come from the state, and uh, we, we saw some areas of growth and we saw some areas of decline. Um, but all of us together, we did a deep dive into the data at all of our different schools and tried to. To see what was working well, um, and how to continue that upward trend and, and areas where maybe we, we declined, how we can. Uh, improve on that, and uh, we actually did see some, and we'll talk about this more at a future meeting, but in this principal. Um, uh, this uh, principal retreat we had, we, we had a, we saw some terrific growth at John Afflong this year. And we had Mrs. Letitia Castro share some of the terrific things that she's doing, um, that she has done, and some of the things that she's put into place. Uh, at her school, and so she did a presentation, and we just heard, I think, across the board from all of our principals, just, they really appreciated some of the changes. That she's implemented and, and done over at John Afflong, and, and we're all just trying to refine our craft and, and do a little bit better job. Uh, and then after the, the retreat and uh, our data analyst. Uh, and then after the the retreat and, uh, our data analyst, our analysis, we asked each principal uh, to do a presentation to Dr. Razzo, Dr. Larson, Dr. Ruiz and myself. And we gave them eight minutes um, to to tell us a little bit about what their data said, uh, about where they were and where they wanted to go and some of the goals that they had. And then we had eight minutes as a team to ask them questions. Um, and it was definitely a worthwhile, um, activity to do with the principals, um, to just make sure that we're using the data, um, of our student performance. You know, I I think I've mentioned this before, Dr. Razzo frequently likes to say that, uh, data, and I completely agree with this, data is the voice of the student. Um, and so this is how we know, uh, in part about what a student needs and and where we have opportunities to to increase, um, performance for our students because data is their voice. And so it was terrific to have these these principals do a deep dive on their data and then present that out and to use that data to set some goals for next year. And, um, we we definitely um, are kind of all trying to get all on the same page of where we want that growth to happen. And, uh, and so it was just a really, a really great process. And I appreciate the principals for participating in that and for for being patient as we, there's just a lot of data to go through. Uh, and our our middle school principals have a little bit more than, um, than than others, especially those K eight programs, just they have a lot to think about and, uh, they were, they were doing a great job. And so I just wanted to share that. Um, as we're setting goals for next year, we really talked about having smart goals and having goals be achievable um, in meaningful ways. And so, um, I really appreciate those principles and and the participation that they they, uh, they had in in that process. And, uh, it's great to kind of just be all on the same page and where we want to be. And so I just wanted to let the board uh, know a little bit about that process and and what we did to set goals for this upcoming year and some of the conversations that took place. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that process.
Board members, do you have any questions? Ms. Hernandez?
No, no, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Watson, I do have a question. In your conversations with the with the principals and the data right now, uh, after the school year ends, we are in receipt of the AZELA, we've got other other, um, assessments that scores that we're getting back. Have there been any discussion or was there an opportunity for discussion, uh, from the principals regarding resources? Uh, and even even the evaluations. Um, this is the first time that I look at that at the at the evaluations and it's either you're performing or what is it? Um, I I'm not, I'm forgetting the the proper wording, but performing or performing plus or?
Yeah, so we we did, we had a lot of, we we had, um, quite a few conversations. Uh, we have some really terrific managers um, who are, and sometimes when we're leaders of a district or leaders of a school, um, we can kind of get into this this idea that we're managers and we are. Uh, principals absolutely are managers. They're the principal manager on their campus and responsible for so many things. And one of the things we we talked a lot about is we, um, we have to make sure we're wearing those two hats, uh, not just we're terrific managers, but we're also um, on our campuses are, um, instructional leads. Um, and it's really challenging as a principal because you have to be able to walk into, uh, an English language arts lesson and be able to, um, analyze what's going well, what's maybe needs improvement and be able to provide that that support to your your teacher. And then, you know, in the next classroom, you might have a, you know, a fifth grade math lesson going on and that you have to know what quality instruction is supposed to look like in a fifth grade math class and then provide, you know, that meaningful feedback, um, to to the teacher. And so we we talked a lot about, um, you know, we're all um, professional educators and we have these education backgrounds and we're experts in instruction. And so we talked a lot about making sure that as important managing is, it's also important to be that instructional leader. They were all hired because they were, um, you know, they were a terrific instructional leader in 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 some way, shape or form in whatever they did, uh, leading up to becoming principal. And so we talked a lot about making sure that we're we're able to wear those both those hats simultaneously and be able to provide that feedback to teachers, whether it's through their evaluation in a more formal way, or whether it's through a a less formal way through just having those conversations and saying, hey, I saw, you know, some really great things happening in your fifth grade math lesson today. Hey, um, have you ever thought about doing this? And so we we absolutely are asking a lot of our principals and providing that feedback and being able to evaluate our teachers and being those instructional leaders on campus. And so a- absolutely, uh, Madam President, we we are having those conversations with our our principals and making sure that they, uh, we want them to hold our our teachers accountable. Our teachers want to be held accountable. They want to be providing a quality lesson um, each and every day. Um, and, you know, some days are better than others. I I've been in a classroom where I thought I taught a really terrific lesson and then I asked them follow-up questions and and I thought, boy, I'm going to have to reteach this lesson because maybe the students didn't get it as well as I thought. And so teachers were are are always reflecting on our our craft. And so we want our principals to be able to support them and provide that meaningful feedback via the evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Uh, I think, um, I'm looking forward to the continued conversations around the goals and modified evaluations and bringing those tools, um, current. Um, as I mentioned to you, that that in that includes a superintendent evaluation. I think that we've, um, uh, really just outdated. We just need to revamp and and make it more, making it more strategic and targeted. Um, and I'm also looking forward to, um, uh, Dr. Ruiz's, um, you know, input regarding that as we move forward. Uh, because as we all sit up here and we listen to our community, I think the, uh, what resonates with me is we're here for for the students, for our community, for the student achievement. And if we're not able to, um, uh, to be, um, effective in that area, I want to make sure that as board, that we're we're putting together policy or creating policy that's going to get us there. And I'm looking forward to working with the with the principals, the school administrators and providing the best resources, I think, to our teachers, um, to our teachers and, uh, and any resource that our principals are needing to ensure that we produce, we produce those, produce those results. Thank you, Mr. Watson. And, um, going on to other information discussion items, um, I have here, um, the governing board retreat, Mr. Watson.
Yeah, we have a proposed date for Wednesday, September seventeenth, um, uh, six o'clock to eight o'clock P M. We've reached out to the Arizona School Board Association, um, to have them, um, present, um, at our board retreat. We know that we have, um, we're lucky here at Cartwright to have a mix of of new and exceptionally, um, seasoned board members all on the same board, uh, which I think bodes well for where we're at today and where we're we want to be moving forward. And so, uh, we've got a a a a hard task for our our, um, our school board, Arizona School Board Association to provide some some, uh, just engaging and meaningful, uh, support to to our new board members, but also those who have are old, uh, old hands at the the work that we're doing. So that's our proposed date. Um, we want it to be, uh, we want, we would like all of our board members to attend if for whatever reason um, that that date doesn't work, we can absolutely look at some other dates. Um, the conversations I've had with the Arizona School Board Association, they've been terrific throughout this process and they've been very, very flexible. Um, they just want to be able to provide us just meaningful support, um, and engagement that we need to to help us, uh, get caught up on on old policies and new policies and, uh, just board governance. And so I'm happy to answer any questions about about that date. And if anybody would has has an issue with that date, uh, feel free to to reach out to me and we can select and recommend some additional ones.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I just wanted to add that the, um, the board governance, part of our role, it's how are we go, the question that I have is how are we going to actualize or execute our roles as governing board members? Since we have to adhere to, uh, board, governing board protocols, district procedures, getting to know our personnel matters, all kinds of matters, and being those experts, uh, at the dais because that's what we're elected for, to provide oversight. So if I'm going to develop, uh, my role, then I need to know how to do it. And so I'm looking forward to the continued, um, Arizona School Board Association, what I've been on the board, I think, over twenty years. Um, and I think as you, as you can see, it doesn't matter. Uh, it all depends on how the board wants to move forward or not move forward. So, but it's important that we we have the data, the parliamentary procedures in place because, um, if we choose to do anything else with, you know, after a board service, this is going to be very, very, uh, important, uh, the professionalism, especially being those masters. I've always, um, you know, told, um, anybody that I come into contact to, you've got to master those rules, uh, so that you can become effective. Um, so I'm looking forward to it greatly. And with that, I'm moving on to item number two, which is the, uh, first reading for information regarding Arizona School Board Association policy advisory, eight oh one through eight oh seven, volume thirty six. Mr. Watson or Dr. Etheridge?
Uh, Madam President, governing board members. Oh, you want it, Mr. Watson, you want to do it?
No, just real quick, I I just want to give a little preface to this and then I'll kick it over you to you, Dr. Etheridge. This, uh, the Arizona School Board Association, uh, one of the things that I I really appreciate about some of the work that they're doing is they're doing a a deep dive into just, uh, policies can become cumbersome over time as you add uh, lots of little things on and on and on. And so our Arizona School Board Association has been doing a deep dive into uh, just revising and I think streamlining some of the policies. And there are going to be a lot of policies coming through over the next, uh, uh, multiple board meetings as they're doing a deep dive into making sure that um, we're not only board policies responding to new legislation, but that we're also going in and seeing some things that maybe have been antiquated or or no longer relevant and doing a little bit of cleanup. And so, um, we're going to see kind of both of those things, some cleanup and response to new to new laws that have been passed here in the state of Arizona, um, and some of these policies that will be coming forward, not just in this meeting, but in future meetings. So, Dr. Etheridge, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. So, yeah, so the administration provides the attached Arizona School Board Association Policy Advisory eight oh one to eight oh seven, volume thirty six for a first reading. A second reading will be brought to the board at a future meeting. Um, the policy advisory received from ASBA were updated to align with statute and or Arizona administrative code language. And so as Mr. Watson said, policy number eight oh one and eight oh two, um, eight oh one is included with section B. And so as he was saying, they're read, they're really relooking at complete sections. So we're not looking at policy advisory eight oh one because that will be in the full section B to look at at a future date. And, um, policy eight oh two with a full section D at a future date. But policy, um, advisory eight oh three, G C F C for professional staff certification and credentialing requirements and exhibit G C F C dash E, professional staff certification and credentialing requirements. This was just updated to include some statutory language in A R S fifteen dash five oh nine. Similarly, in, uh, policy advisory eight oh four, G D F A support staff qualifications and requirements and exhibit G D F A dash E, support staff qualification requirements. This actually was updated to include the exact same language. It's just one is for professional staff. This one is for support staff. Uh, uh, policy advisory eight oh five, I G A curriculum development. This had some language in there, um, requiring certified personnel to serve on curriculum committees. That was removed, um, due to a lack of statutory basis requiring that. Policy advisory eight oh six, I M G animals in schools and regulation I M G dash R animals in schools. The language is updated and clarified based on the American with Disabilities Act, A R S eleven dash one zero zero two four and A C R thirteen dash thirteen dash one oh four. And then finally, uh, policy advisory eight oh seven, J L C D dash R medicines and administering medicines to students. This has the Arizona State Board of Education updated R seven dash two dash eight eleven on, uh, Caesar management training. And so the rule clarifies the application of Senate Bill sixteen fifty four regarding the implementation of correct timelines for school compliance, required maintenance of proof of completed training and appropriate publication of applicable resources.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding those board policies? I just have to uh, to share that as I was reviewing, um, previous to the meeting that there's a policy that I'm beginning to see, just now beginning to see, uh, that we've either discussed or voted on and passed, uh, so in statute. So there were there were a couple of them that were very, uh, relative, uh, that's interesting for me to see and kind of exciting, but moving forward. Going on to item number three, the first read for information regarding Arizona School Board Association Policy Advisory eight zero eight, volume thirty six, number six, nine oh six, nine oh eight, volume thirty seven, number six, Dr. Etheridge.
Madam President, governing board. So the administration presents to the governing board for a first reading the Arizona School Board Association Policy advisories. A second reading will be provided at a future governing board meeting for approval. So these policy advisories, um, eight oh eight was I H B dash R special instruction programs. The revision impacts the individualized education program requirements, particularly in the area of transition services, including the inclusion of an estimated graduation date and written notification to parents of the anticipated graduation date. And then in, um, Arizona School Board Association Policy Advisory nine oh six, I J N D B, use of technology resources in instruction and regulation I N G D B dash R, use of technology resources in instruction. Um, this has policy and regulation incorporates the new mandates and headings were added to improve clarity related to student access to the internet, student use of wireless communication devices, policies, procedures, annual notice and definitions for, uh, public schools. So similar, what you just talked about, recent legislation that was just passed, updated that. Policy advisory nine oh seven, J L F, reporting child abuse and child protection. Although policy J L F already requires board members to report conduct involving minors subject to mandatory reporting under A R S thirteen dash three six two zero, some additional language has been added to just clarify that to ensure alignment with Senate Bill fourteen thirty seven. Definitions and headings were added to improve clarity as well. And then policy advisory nine oh eight, J R, student records and regulation J R dash R student records. Policy J R and regulation J R dash R have been updated to ensure compliance with the new requirements under A R S fifteen dash one oh two and A R S fifteen dash one forty two relating to parental involvement in schools and student directory information.
Thank you. Any questions there? This is the first read. Um, so it's really an introduction and opportunity for us to review the policy. Um, and as as you were speaking, I just want to point something out, not just use it as an example. Uh, for example, this, uh, this advisory, it's volume thirty seven, number six, but it says new legislative impacts include updates for mandatory reporting, wireless communication devices and internet access and expanded parental notice and authorization for school directory information. So those are important things, I think, that as board members that that we review and being in communication and, you know, with our community members, um, understand, you know, our roles of, I mean, our policies so that we know how we implement those basically are rules, uh, moving forward. And so these are are changing, obviously. Um, so it's our role or it's our job to understand them and and know what our policy is. And with that, thank you, Dr. Etheridge. That is our first read. And we've got an item number four as well, first reading for information regarding the Arizona School Board Association Policy eight sixty three through eight sixty five, volume thirty seven, number three.
Yes, Madam President, governing board members, the administration presents to the governing board for a first reading the Arizona School Board Association Policy Advisory. A second reading will be provided at a future governing board meeting for approval. So policy advisory you see from ASBA updates the language to align with statutory updates for policies I H A and J L I F. So I H A is basic instructional program. It was revised to reflect the emergency measure approved by the governor in March of twenty twenty five that amended A R S fifteen dash seven one zero dot O two regarding nine eleven education day by specifying the relevant grade levels for, um, nine eleven education. And then finally, policy advisory eight sixty five, J L I F, sex offender notification. This includes revisions to A R S thirteen dash three eight two five, including the addition of level one offender information and an additional notification requirement as well.
Thank you, Dr. Etheridge. And again, some of those that that are that are somewhat resonate with me, but it's really, um, adding some guard rules to existing state statutes, um, that not, don't always make sense, but, um, but thank you for that. And moving forward, and you said that that was the first reading. Okay, so at this point, we've got an item number five, which is a request for future agenda items as, um, information discussion for a future governing board meeting. Do we have any, any other or any request for future agenda items? for a future governing board meeting. Do we have any, any other or any request for future agenda items? And this under item I, number five.
Mister Watson, Mister, um.
Miss Cantu.
Mister Etheridge, um. In, in the past, um, our plus five employees, um, hours were. Sure, correct? Can we, is it possible that we can, um, form a committee to, um, review the classified hours? To, in order to see the possibilities to give them back those hours?
Madam President, uh, Vice President Cantu, absolutely. We can, we can take a look at that. We can run some numbers. We can, can do that, definitely.
Just, just the fact that our classified, um, are the base of our district. They're the families of our students and, uh, they are the ones that support this organization. I think it's just fair that we can at least do something, uh, that will benefit them.
Thank you. We could definitely take a look.
Thank you, Miss Cantu. Um, were you thinking of perhaps a study committee or?
Yeah, a study committee that can look in the possibilities. I mean, if we're cutting somewhere and, you know, trying to make the budget as tight as possible, at least I want to consider, uh, some. How do you say, uh? I see that we have, we have stipends throughout the, the district for all the, the areas and, um, just the fact that we don't see the support staff, the classifieds important. I, I would like to visit, uh, with the, with the, uh, committee to review what, what possibilities they, they can get.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam President, Vice President Cantu, the other thing I will add to that is we, um, we kind of have an agreement with Mean Confer that we would do kind of an every other year salary schedule look at. So we do, we did ESPs two years ago, this past year, um, we did certified staff. And so this coming up school year would be with Mean Confer, um, looking at ESP salary schedule. So hours could be definitely part of that as well.
Thank you, Miss Cantu. And I, I certainly do concur because over the last year, for the last five, six years, every budget, you know, I've been advocating for classified, but the situations, um, and I also have to mention that a lot of respect, you know, respectfully and respectively, that the, um, the stipends are probably aware, you know, made more available, not all, um, with the exception of extracurricular, extracurricular activities, but we do have stipends for certified staff, you know? And that's, uh, you know, for added certifications and qualifications that they may have. But, um, but I'm certainly in favor of, of, uh, at least viewing to see what we could do, at least as an action step. Uh, when we draft a plan because being mindful of the discussion that we just had regarding a current budget situation. But at least studying it before, you know, moving forward, perhaps we could find some viability to it. Thank you so much for bringing that, that up. Um, and now moving on to item J. Uh, we do have a, an executive session coming forward. I'd like to share some information. So, um, first of all, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mister Aaron Brown. He is, um, an attorney with Gus Rosenfeld and. Uh-oh. Typele. Thank you. Yeah, just a, just a typele. But, um, how could I not? I just read. But again, so it is with, if you can state it again, sorry. Can't tell me and Brown. And, and I'm sorry, Mister Brown, because I should have caught that myself. I, I, I've been, when I address you, I called you Attorney Brown. So, um, sorry for that. But, uh, Mister Brown has been working with us on, uh, on a request uh, for, he's conducted an investigation and at the district's request. And let me, let me move forward with that. In, uh, introducing that, that part of the meeting. The employee has requested, um, public discussion of this item in a public meeting. So pursuant to ARS thirty eight four thirty one or oh three to discuss the investigation regarding the contracts and related board actions, which led to the appointment of Emma Hattig as interim superintendent and superintendent. Um, so we will be going, this involves a public portion and then executive session. And with that, I am making a motion that we vote to go into executive session, um, which will not be do, am I going correctly? Do we do the public or just guide me on this?
Yes, uh, Madam President, um, the way it's agendized, because, um, Mrs. Wadig has requested that the, uh, discussion, um, regarding the investigation take place in open session. It would be, it's agendized that we will have, I will report on the investigation first in open session. Um, but because some of the information that was gathered during the investigation involves past executive session, uh, recordings, minutes, uh, which are confidential and cannot be disclosed. Uh, and because there's also privileged communications between, um, one of the district's attorneys and, um, various, uh, employees of the district, which is also confidential. That portion of the, uh, discussion regarding the investigation will have to take place in executive session as, as been noticed in item K one. And then, uh, following that portion, um, there's a separate executive session for legal advice. Uh, if it's required or needed, um, that will take place. And then we will come back into open session and there is an action item for consideration for the board. Okay, it's, it's kind of an unusual, uh, situation, but because of the confidentiality of, uh, executive session information, we cannot discuss it in open session. In fact, under the statute, um, that information can only be disclosed to a very short list of individuals, which includes the board. Um, but, um, it cannot be disclosed to others. And so that's why we need to do it that way.
Mister Brown, um, we have, uh, some board members that have not been through, as we just mentioned, we're going to be going through a board retreat and policies and all that conversation. And we haven't had an open meeting law. We kind of been, you know, talked about it, but they haven't been, uh, through, through that, uh, training. Um, and, and also, you know, we, the public, for the public purposes as well. Uh, this is not something that I'm creating to, to go and have a, a confidential conversation. But why, um, we have the public agenda. And as you can see today, we went through a public hearing that we're required for like to have. Then we went into a, a general governing board meeting and now we're going to an executive session, then coming back out and having a public portion of a, you know, addressing a personnel matter. Uh, for, for our purposes, could you explain to me what, what or to us, the, uh, the purpose of what is in, um, um, an executive session?
Sure, be glad to do it. So, under Arizona's open meeting law, which is found in Title thirty eight of ARS, um, there are, um, exceptions. So let me start with the broad picture because this is part of, uh, my report to the board. Um, Arizona, uh, has an open meeting law. And generally what that law requires is that all board business, uh, be conducted in, in open meeting. Uh, and the purpose for that is so that the public can view and participate in the decisions made with taxpayer dollars. And, and so generally, um, all business of the public body, in this case, the governing board of the Cartwright District must be done in open session. However, there are exceptions to that. Uh, and executive sessions are allowed where conversations can be had in executive sa- session, which is behind closed doors. And, um, some of those exceptions include, for example, under A one, which is cited on the, uh, agenda. Um, personnel discussions, uh, when you discuss, uh, personnels, uh, uh, and, and employees, employment, uh, possible discipline, et cetera, that can take place in executive session. However, um, that employee, whoever is going to be discussed in executive session, the way the law works is you must give them a notice with it twenty-four hours before the meeting and give them the opportunity to, to decide whether or not that discussion will be uh, had behind closed doors in executive session or in open session. So the employee has the right to, uh, request either or. Uh, and in this case, um, Mrs. Wadig has requested that this discussion, uh, take place in open session. Another example of an, uh, an, an exception to the open meeting law, um, is to receive legal advice. And so the governing body can go into executive session to receive legal advice. Another exception, uh, is to discuss records that are made confidential by law. Uh, and that is involved in this case. As I mentioned earlier, we will be, um, the investigation involved review of past executive session minutes and recordings. And those cannot be disclosed to the public. Those are highly confidential. And so there's an executive session exception that allows the board to go into executive session to discuss those. And there are other exceptions. There are seven total exceptions. But really, those are the three that relate to this situation. And so, um, that is the difference and the reason why we go into executive session.
Thank you, Mister Brown. Um, and, and just with that, uh, those are our guiding, um, statutes, which is state, created by state law. Um, so I can't just go and take my own action if I wanted to and just reprimand and take you out and take you. It, it doesn't work that way. Um, and we're not able to disclose, um, any document that might be deemed confidential relative to an employee. I just wanted to understand, make sure that I'm understanding that. Okay.
May I proceed?
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, a- and the investigation, um, involved specifically conduct at meetings that were held by the governing board um, as they relate to the process that was followed to enter into two contracts in specific with respect to, uh, Mrs. Wadig. The first contract was, um, first discussed in and brought to, um, the board on October third of two thousand and twenty four. And that contract, um, was, um, approved by the board on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. And that contract was for a three-year superintendency, um, on, uh, given to Emma Wadig that begins on July one, two thousand and twenty five and, uh, expires or, uh, its term ends on June thirty, two thousand and twenty eight. That happened, uh, was first discussed on October third. Uh, it was, uh, approved by the board on October seventeenth. And then at the December five, two thousand and twenty four meeting, um, a second contract was, um, brought to the board. And that was to, um, amend Emma Wadig's, um, contract as an administrator to make her the interim superintendent. And that became by its terms effective on December thirteenth and expires on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty five here in a, in a week or so. And so we were asked to look at these contracts and the process that led to the execution of those contracts. And in so doing, what we did is we went back and looked at lots of documents, uh, beginning in June of tw- two thousand and twenty four. We looked at all board meetings, uh, minutes. We looked at all recordings, um, to, um, fully investigate. We looked at many documents and emails. We looked at agreements. Um, but primarily, um, a- and we interviewed folks. We interviewed, um, Emma Wadig, um, among others. Uh, we did attempt to interview Doctor Lawler. Um, but she, uh, refused to be interviewed and we were unable to meet with her to talk to her about her knowledge of the, uh, circumstances leading up to these meetings and the contracts that resulted from them. And our focus was the, as I said, the process. And under the open meeting law, I'm going to give you a little bit of the law because it's important to understand the law as it relates to open meeting to, to, um, tie together the facts with the law. So Arizona's open meeting law requires that all legal action of public bodies occurred during a public meeting. The purpose is to quote, "ensure that the public may attend and monitor the meetings of all public bodies." With, and one of the focuses and, uh, the opinions that we have relate to what was placed on the agenda. The agendas for these meetings. Um, and with respect to what must be placed on the, uh, agenda, giving the public notice of the business to be transacted in an open meeting, ARS thirty eight dash four thirty one oh nine A provides, quote, "It is the public policy of this state that meetings of public bodies be conducted openly and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings which contain such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided." Towards this end, any person or entity charged with the interpretations of this article shall construe this article in favor of open and public meetings. Moving on to thirty eight four thirty one oh two H, it provides in pertinent part, "Agendas shall list the specific matters to be discussed, considered, considered or decided at the meeting." And so when something is gon- going to come before the governing board, it's got to be agendized. And we have a gen- an agenda up in front of us. And the law is that it's got to lift, list the specific matters to be discussed. The Arizona Attorney General has published a handbook, which is very useful and could be used by all public bodies to understand and follow the open meeting law. And it also, the, the handbook goes into public records and other important, uh, uh, laws regarding public business. But the ha- handbook says this about what must be on an agenda, giving the public notice of the business that is intended to be transacted. As a general, quote, "As a general rule, public bodies should always be mindful of the legislature's declaration of policy that agendas contain such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed, discussed or decided. When in doubt, resolve questions in favor of greater disclosure of information." An obvious corollary to this point is that something that is not on the agenda, uh, there can be no legal action taken because it was not noticed. So, um, another issue that has come up in this investigation is what about executive sessions? Uh, the, the law with respect to what must be in on, on an agenda for executive sessions is a little, little less exacting. The, the public body is required in, for executive sessions to give a general description of the matters to be considered. In this regard, the handbook indicates the description must amount to more than just a recital of statutory provisions authorizing the executive session, but should not contain any information that would defeat the purpose of the executive session, compromise the legitimate privacy interests of a public officer, appointee or employee, or compromise the inter- attorney-client privilege. And so when we prepare agenda notices for executive session, there's a balance that has to be struck. We have to give enough information so the public has an idea of what's going to be discussed, but we can't give too much information so that it, it, it frustrates the purpose of. of the confidential nature of the executive session. So then the question becomes, what is the effect or consequence of failing to properly notice an item of business on an agenda? Under Arizona law, any action that is taken at a meeting on an item not properly noticed on an open meeting agenda violates the open meeting law and is null and void. So if an item is not properly noticed, so that, and again, the purpose of this is that the public can decide, do I want to come to this board meeting and participate, listen? Because this is what's gonna be decided at the meeting. If that isn't done correctly, then the action item with respect to the legal action that's taken with respect to that item is null and void. So we, as I indicated, have reviewed hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents, many hours of recordings. And again, let me preface this by saying that some of what we need to discuss will have to be discussed in executive session. We cannot talk about it here. But it is our opinion that the agendas were insufficient and that the open meeting law was violated with respect to the following actions that took place at the following meetings with respect to the following legal items, legal action items. The October 3rd, 2024 board meeting in which the governing board accepted the resignation of Dr. Lawler. We believe that that is our view that that action was null and void. Why? Because it wasn't on the agenda anywhere. It was never agendized and yet the board took legal action on that issue. Also on October 3rd, 2024, the authorization that was given to the then-president of the board, Mrs. Abetia, to go negotiate a superintendent contract, and this is a three-year contract for Emma Huadegi. We believe that that was not properly agendized. And we believe that authority that was given to the board president was null and void. With respect to the December 5th meeting, what happened in the December 5th meeting was that Dr. Lawler submitted a second resignation. Some of you may recall that. That resignation, it was an accelerated resignation. Her first resignation was to be effective June 30 of 2025. And then on December 5th, she accelerated that to make it effective on December 12th, 2024. That item was not on the agenda and it is our opinion that that's null and void. Also on December 5th, 2024, a separation agreement was presented to the board for consideration and it was a separation agreement for Dr. Lawler. It is our opinion that that item was not properly agendized. And we're gonna look at those in just a moment so that you can see what I'm talking about. But I'm giving you a summary of our findings. We believe that that was not properly agendized and therefore the separation agreement is null and void. And then finally, with respect to the December 5th, 2024 meeting, there was an approval by the board of Emma Huadegi's administrative contract, which amended it to make her the interim superintendent. We believe that that was not properly agendized under the open meeting law and we believe that that is also null and void. Let me comment on the three-year contract to Emma Huadegi that was approved by the board on October 17th, 2024. That is a closer call. Who knows which way that might go? That item was agendized in a way that possibly could be deemed legal but it also might not be deemed legal and we'll look at that. But one comment is that it is our view and my view, having looked at all of this stuff, that there was an effort to conceal and to not disclose to the public what was happening as it related to these contracts. And so a court looking at that as it relates to the October 17th action that was taken by the board respecting the three-year contract, that may be taken into account when the court looks at what was actually agendized and the legal action that was taken. If we could pull up the agenda that was posted for the public on October 3rd, 2024, I'd like to start with that. So if you look at that agenda, switch glasses here. All right, so if we can scroll down, please, to the items involving the contracts. Keep going, please. Okay, right there. All right. So let's start with the, now first let me give it the context that it needs. So what happened at this meeting? On October 3rd, Dr. Lawler's resignation was accepted by the board. All right. And in addition to that, the board voted to give the board president authority to negotiate a new contract with a new superintendent. And the executive session item, which we also think was insufficient, says, "The governing board may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public pursuant to ARS 38-43103A1 for discussion consideration of the superintendent fall performance pay and superintendent contract contractual terms." So that is not notice that a new superintendent was being considered. It goes on, then in the resumption of the regular meeting, it's item three, "Possible action and approval of the superintendent contract contractual terms 2025." It gives no notice to the public that a new superintendent was the, was what would be discussed. And also item four, "Possible action and approval of offer of contract for superintendent." When I look at this, and I think the most reasonable read of these agenda items is that it appears that what the board was planning on doing is giving Dr. Lawler another contract. There's no mention of new superintendent. There's no notice, in my opinion, to the public that a new superintendent is going to be considered. And that's an important point that was not included in the agenda item. And let me read you what the board did when it took legal action. The board considered the following motion, "Approval for the governing board to approve the acceptance of the resignation of Superintendent Dr. Leann Lawler." If the board wanted to do that, it had every right to do that, but it needed to be agendized and it wasn't. It goes on to say, the next, so that was one motion and legal action that was taken. Then that board next considered the following motion, "For the governing board to approve the board president to offer negotiated contract terms to the designated superintendent candidate, Ms. Emma Huadegi, to be effective July 1, 2025, with formal terms of the contract to be approved by the governing board at a future meeting of the board proposed for October 17th, 2024." And so that was the legal action that was taken. And the question is, are the items that were agendized, did that give reasonable notice to the public that that was what was the, that was the action that was being contemplated by the board to be taken? We don't think it was. So the October 17th meeting, as I indicated, if we could pull that up, I think it's a closer call. In that instance, it indicates approval to offer the superintendent employment contract on the terms discussed in the executive session and approval to authorize the governing board president to sign the contract on behalf of the district. I'm not sure why Mrs. Huadegi's name wasn't included in that. It was already known. Sometimes when there are multiple candidates, if you're gonna have an executive session, you don't disclose the individual's names because it's just consideration of possible new superintendent. We may have multiple candidates or for privacy purposes. I don't think you need to disclose the name for executive session. But in this case, it was known who the individual was, but her name was not included in the agenda item. And as I said, I think that's a closer call. Let's now turn to the December 5th, 2024 board meeting. So again, let me tee up what business actually occurred and what was agendized. So at the December 5th meeting, the board accepted a second resignation from Dr. Lawler, one action item. It also approved a separation agreement, which is a significant document. It's a, it's an agreement that says we're parting ways. This is what we will give and this is what you will give. It's a contract. It's legal. It can be, if it's done correctly, it's legally binding. And then the district also then gave doctor, or I'm sorry, Emma Huadegi, it amended her contract and named her as the interim superintendent. So here's what was agendized for the resumption of regular meeting. If we could scroll down just a bit to that. There you go, right there. H1, "Consideration of the current superintendent terms of employment." It doesn't give any notice that the board is going to consider a resignation. That was known before the meeting took place. It doesn't give any notice about a separation agreement. It's very general. It's non-specific. And it was all known at the time in terms of what was contemplated and what was gonna be done. And then it goes on, "Consideration of the deputy superintendent, that's Emma Huadegi's, current terms of employment for the 2024-25 school year." Gives no notice that the board is considering naming her as the interim superintendent. And the way agendas should be written is in a way that gives the board or the public enough notice so that it can decide, hey, I want to come and listen to this and I want to participate in this public meeting because this is an important thing. Naming an interim superintendent can be an important thing. So my opinion and our opinion is that those items were not properly agendized. I will tell you that with respect to the October 3rd meeting and the December 5th meeting and including the October 17th meeting, there is evidence, some of which I cannot go into in open session, there is evidence that there was an effort to omit information that would have given the public the information needed to know what was going on. And so it is, one other point that I want to make and then we can, I can answer questions and we can go into executive session after that to continue the conversation. There's also evidence, and most of this has to be discussed in executive session, but there's also evidence that the open meeting law may have been violated in respect to conversations outside of an open meeting regarding public business. And let me give you the law on that. "All meetings of a public body must comply with the open meeting law." Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431-4, "A meeting is defined as the gathering in person or through technological devices of a quorum of members of a public body at which they discuss, propose, or take legal action, including any deliberations by a quorum with respect to such action." Critically, simultaneous interaction is not required for a meeting or gathering within the open meeting law. What's more, public officials may not circumvent public discussion by splintering the quorum, which can be, by splintering the quorum and having separate or serial discussions. And what that means is the open meeting law can be violated if one board member talks to another board member outside of an open meeting law about public business that they may take legal action on. And then one of them goes and talks to another board member, which means now three quorum, a quorum, three board members with respect to this public body have discussed an item outside of an open meeting, outside of the purview of the public. And that creates an open meeting violation. Thus, even if communications on a particular subject between members of a public body do not take place at the same time or place, the communications can nonetheless constitute a meeting. And by having those conversations outside of a properly agendized open meeting, that can result in an open meeting violation. And so our recommendation to the board is that the investigative report, which is some 23 pages with many exhibits, be submitted to the Arizona Attorney General for consideration, review, possible investigation and possible action. And under statute, it could also go to the Maricopa County Attorney. And so that is the summary of the investigation in terms of what can be discussed in open session.
Thank you. Does this process allow for any questions pertaining to what you have shared with us?
I think so.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Board member Romero.
My first question is, will we keep Ms. Huadegi on paid administrative leave until this is resolved?
It's a board decision.
Okay. And other than that, since Ms. Huadegi has a valid superintendent certificate and fingerprint clearance card and this placement on administrative leave is not disciplinary, it would be financially wise to let Ms. Huadegi return until if slash when this, this will save the district from paying two superintendents at the same time. But other than that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Board member Romero. Don't know where you got that information since we haven't shared it publicly. We've not discussed a contract nor any type of discussion in an open forum. But thank you for your question.
Any other questions I can answer?
I have a question.
Yes.
So thank you for the information. I've been waiting. So greatly appreciated. So as you were describing several incidents, you, several times you did refer to opinions and information perhaps that was omitted and that it needs to be reviewed by the Attorney General's office, yeah, the AG's office. And with that being said, it seems like, I mean, I appreciate that Ms. Huadegi decided to have this meeting in an open forum. However, I still feel like in spite of everything that you just mentioned, it doesn't seem to me that nothing was done maliciously. And so I don't know how those, the oversight could have become oversights and perhaps inaccurate information, omitted information. So again, I do not believe that anything was done in malice. I'm not sure, other than what you've shared, what that, I mean, what that would entail. I mean, I'm interested to go to the back to hear more. I mean, I'm interested to go to the back to hear more. But I still believe in due process, period. And just like any judicial matter, everyone, an accused individual deserves to face his or her accusers. And that would be considered due process. So with that being said, I mean, because we did look at the agenda, I mean, I barely got it last night, and taking notes and trying to go through every single item on here and looking at the past, because I was on the board and while these decisions were being made and I trusted the process. But I also believe that as human beings, we are not perfect. And once again, I think this is the third time I'm saying it, I believe under no circumstances was there any malice or ill intentions in voting and bringing Ms. Emma Haudig as, voting as her interim superintendent. And we've said before that she is, she, her experience is stellar. She is certified with the superintendent's certification. She's been, she's been here for over 20 years. Her commitment and loyalty to this district goes above and beyond and is greatly appreciated. I have never known her to do anything that is malicious or unjust. In fact, I've seen her go above and beyond to provide support to families, children, the children that we serve and the community. So the importance of being able to honor her contract until this is resolved, until this matter is resolved, would be greatly appreciated. And I think that as board members here, we need to remain objective and not be accusatory, because this is by no means a trial. We are truth fighters. We are advocates of children. Again, Ms. Haudig has done a stellar job all the years that she's been here. Her loyalty has been unblemished, her work unblemished. And I just feel that due process would be really important here and to honor her contract until this matter is resolved, I would ask the board to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's important to point out that what I do as an attorney is investigate and find the evidence and analyze it under existing law and then give the board my advice and guidance and opinion. It's certainly not intended to be accusatory in the sense that that term would be defined. My job in this investigation was to gather the facts and present the board with the evidence. And you are certainly correct that due process is an important part of that process.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and which is why we've employed the actions that we have and following every single rule, which was frustrating because my past experience while serving on this board has not been such. I think what some of the items that you mentioned and some of the, even at our current meeting that we were having, the pattern has been discussions or actions without board approval, even information that was not shared. And I'm talking about the actions, the items on the agenda that we've discussed today, which is to me a pattern. And I by no means have made it very clear that my role as president or as a board member is here to be as effective as I can, which involves providing oversight by employing the policies and procedures. And when we're not adhering to them, then sky's the limit and we make mistakes. And when I keep mentioning, you know, in rush or haste for whatever reason, and it's not just limited in my opinion to just the recent, I think what we're currently discussing, but being that that practice has been employed for far too long that we're now facing the repercussions of the board to cover expenses because of the many, many mistakes that were done because we rushed through a process or jumped through a process with a lack of oversight, which is our only role on this board. And the only one individual that we're responsible for, and I'll point to you, Dr. Reth, because you're in that role right now, but is our superintendent. And it is just really applying our due diligence to be as effective, effective as we can for the purposes of ensuring that our kids are meeting their academic achievement goals so that they can go on and graduate and have a, you know, good opportunity and chance in life. This is certainly not by any chance, it's never been personal nor intentional, it's just simply fulfilling our roles.
Mr. Brown, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Brown, based on what Lydia just said...
And with all the respect, I still had the floor, but I miss Denise Garcia, thank you.
I agree in many respects in that our priority should be the children here. The children, the students, the scholars, the families that we serve. And with that being said, there, I just, I find it a little ironic that we are talking about breaking, violating open meeting laws, which has been done recently, beginning in December, by board members. We have, I've read things on Instagram about me, about executive sessions that would have not been known unless it was shared by board members. This goes to speak to unethical practices, which is what I was, I guess, referring to when you were discussing about these open meeting laws and things that may have been done unintentionally. And I don't know everything because I wasn't in that. But I do know that as a board member, I was here and based on the information that was given to us, based on information that was discussed in executive session, we made informed...
Remember, you cannot talk about a good conversation.
No, 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 we made informed decisions, is what I'm saying. And so when Jenny was talking about, just made reference to, what was it?
And Mrs. Garcia, I just...
I'm still speaking.
Mrs. Garcia, I just want, I want to caution you that when you make statements, they are not a matter of fact, which is why we've hired somebody to review.
I know that, okay.
And I apologize for interrupting. I would caution the board, we agendized this investigation. Let's not go afield to talk about other instances and try to compare. Let's keep the discussion on the investigation.
And, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate that and I appreciate the transparency. But I also at some point would like to talk about the elephant in the room. And so with that being said, I will hold my questions for executive session. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? If there are none, we're ready. Thank you, Mr. Brown. The executive session. So the governing board may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public pursuant to ARS 38, 431, 03, 82, to discuss records exempt by law from public inspection related to the investigation into the contracts and related board actions which led to the appointment of Emma Haudig as interim superintendent and superintendent. The governing board may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public pursuant to ARS 38, 431, 03, 83, for discussion or consultation for legal advice with the attorney or attorneys of the public body regarding the investigation into the contracts and related board actions which led to the appointment of Emma Haudig as interim superintendent and superintendent. With that, I move that we go into executive session. Do I have a second?
I second Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Cantu, and I will pursue to go into a roll call vote. How do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Cantu. Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Denise Garcia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye. We are adjourning the governing, the regular governing board meeting, go into executive session. And let the record reflect that it is 8:41. And let the record reflect that it is eight forty-one. Thank you.
To resume our regular governing board meeting. The time is nine forty six. And that's the outcome, I'd like to make a a motion to approve to direct attorney for the district to submit the investigation report regarding the contracts and related board actions which led to the appointment of Imahadegi as interim superintendent and superintendent to the Arizona Attorney General and/or the Mary Cope County Attorney for review consideration and possible action. Do I have a second?
I second Madam President.
Thank you Ms. Cantu and how do you vote?
I would aye.
Thank you Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I would aye.
Thank you and Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I will abstain.
Thank you, please let the record reflect there's an abstention. And Ms. Denise Garcia, how do you vote?
I vote nay.
Thank you and I vote aye and motion carries. Going on to the announcement of future date, at a future date and other routine information. The next regular governing board meeting will be held on August thirteenth, twenty twenty five at six P M at the Cartwright School District Governing Boardroom. Do I have a second? I move, well that was the announcement, but I move that we adjourn, sorry I don't need an action for that, I move that we adjourn the governing board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second Madam President.
Thank you and how do you vote?
I would aye.
Thank you Ms. Cantu and Ms. Hernandez, how do you vote?
I would aye.
Thank you and Ms. Romero, how do you vote?
I would aye.
Thank you and Ms. Garcia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye and I vote aye and motion carries, we are now adjourned. Thank you so much. The record for the record, thank you, it is nine forty eight.